Hereby I call to order the adjourned regular meeting of the Palm Springs City Council on November 29th, 2017. City, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Hart, would you please do a roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Coors, Councilmember Mills, Councilmember Roberts,
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Foote,
Here.
Mayor Moon.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Next, presentations. City manager, do we have any presentations?
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Reddy asked me to make a comment at this juncture in the meeting, and that's what I'm about to do.
On November the fif- Was that a threat or a warning, Eddie? My God. Sounded threatening.
On November the fifteenth, I reported out of closed session that there was, in fact, no time spent on an item noticed on the closed session agenda, and you were kind enough to give me a copy of the actual agenda, Councilmember Roberts, so I have it here. We did specifically initiate or have on our agenda the initiation of litigation with respect to two cases, and I think I said during my closed session report out that we didn't address that. And I'd like to correct that report. I made a mistake. We did, in fact, address the initiation of litigation, and depending on how things shake out here tonight at this council meeting, I may say a little bit more about that. But I want it on the record that we did address an initiation of litigation matter, and I'd also like it on the record with respect to the fifteenth that the reason I failed to correctly report it out is that I make, on good old fashioned paper, a little check mark on my closed session list, and I failed to make a check mark next to the initiation of litigation matter, even though one of our initiation of litigation matters was discussed in connection with and in relation to one of our exposure to litigation matters. And I neglected to make two check marks for the one item. So I made that mistake. I'm correcting it here tonight. And that does, in fact, relate to our discussion of the second reading of the Development Agreement ordinance with respect to the Virgin. We've received, as I think you know, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, two separate complaints, specific requests that we take curative action for alleged violation of the Brown Act and also alleged violation of our own ethics principles that we last took action on in the month of October, at the beginning of the month. You recall the report that Councilmember Coors delivered with my assistance regarding some thirty-plus initiatives that you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Coors put together, putting together the fruit of the labors of many, many good people in our community regarding ethics and transparency, and we still have action to take in that regard. But with respect to the allegations, there were two of them. We did, in fact, have a special closed session earlier today at 4:00 p.m. that was noticed in accord with the Brown Act. We did, in fact, discuss those matters at that special closed session. I reported out of the closed session that no reportable action was, in fact, taken. Both matters were listed because, under the Brown Act, that's appropriate, given the circumstances of these Brown Act allegations. Because I was personally involved with these alleged violations, Dr. Reddy and I determined internally that it would be appropriate to consult with special counsel regarding this matter, and that is, in fact, what we've done. The gentleman seated to my left, you're looking at me, so to the right of me, sitting here at the table, is Mr. Gary Shons. And Mr. Shons is someone with whom I've been familiar for a very long time. I think you all know I was in law enforcement for eleven years. At the time that I was in law enforcement, he was still in law enforcement. He was a supervising deputy attorney general and very highly regarded in law enforcement. He now heads up the Public Integrity Department, and I'm not sure that that's exactly the right name for Best, Best and Krieger, close enough for government work. And as a practical matter, it's Mr. Shons's responsibility to oversee that practice at one of the biggest and, I would say, best municipal law firms in California. So he's here in that capacity as your special counsel, and he's going to make some comments with respect to the closed session matters that I just alluded to.
Thank you, Ed. I have looked over at the request of the city attorney of the complaints that were filed, and let me address the first complaint that was provided by Mr. Friedman and Mr. Tansey. They allege violations of the Brown Act. First, that there was an improper closed session in advance of the number fifteen meeting. And, in fact, as has now been, I think, partially clarified by the report out that the city attorney's given, that there was, in fact, discussions at that meeting of not only existing litigation and exposure to litigation, but also initiation of litigation. And that's what was, at least, the part of the meeting that I actually sat in, a part of that closed session, was pertinent and relevant to the initiation of litigation, as the members of the council are aware. The mention of contractual waiver, I'm not really certain what that means. It may be that in closed sessions that are properly noticed and properly conducted, that discussions may, you know, go off topic a little bit, but the idea is, is that the topic of it was litigation in the ten ninety area, I guess I'll say that, and that topic was related. The second, the violation of the agenda requirement has now been addressed and cured by the city attorney. The violation of the public's right to comment, I have consulted with other attorneys in my firm who have been served as city attorneys for decades, literally. There is just nothing in the Brown Act which, in any way, states or suggests that matters in staff reports that don't necessarily disclose every potential aspect of an action that a border council might make somehow violates the public's right to address the body. And that is essentially what is a gravamen to this claim, and it lacks merit, in my view. The violation of the ownership policy, item twenty-nine, first of all, that, as I understand it, has not been finally adopted by the city. It's going to be adopted, as I understand, next year, but even to the extent that it's aspirational, and it's something that the city and the council wants to abide by. The ownership interest was, in fact, disclosed in the supplemental report that was in the yellow file for the meeting, and so I don't see a violation of that. The timeliness report policy, again, from what I understand, there is nothing in the timeliness policy, which I believe is in effect, which in any way suggests that the yellow folder policy that the city and the council has had for years is somehow displaced by the seventy-two hour notice requirement. So I don't find that that allegation has merit. And then as to the second complaint, which was filed or emailed by Robert Stone, it essentially is overlapping. And he, Mr. Stone complains that the Brown Act was violated because the public hearing omitted the names of the sponsors of the Virgin Hotel. Again, that's not a Brown Act violation in and of itself, and perhaps what I could say pertinent to that is you can't take the policy and transparency policies of the city and bootstrap them into Brown Act violations. The law simply doesn't work that way. But in any event, on the merits, it is untrue because there was that disclosure before the meeting in the report that was provided in the yellow file.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I wanted Mr. Shons to speak first because, obviously, as your city attorney, who took a role in these proceedings, I didn't want to simply declare that there's been no Brown Act violation and no violation of the city's policies and have that be the final word. You've heard from outside counsel who doesn't have a dog in the fight, so to speak. I think that his comments are consistent with mine that I'm about to make just very briefly. This is not a close call. I understand that there's a lot of passion in our community on this issue, and I respect and even admire the people who express that passion. Just the other day, I thanked Mr. Friedman very much for taking the time to prepare that very detailed and comprehensive document that he shared, which is before the public. We in Palm Springs welcome that. I dare say that my background in law enforcement may even be part of the reason I got this job. And as a practical matter, this council has made it apparent to me that there is nothing more important to the five of you than public integrity and transparency. Certainly, that is something that guides my actions on a daily basis. And with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll simply say, from my perspective as your attorney, there's been no Brown Act violation with respect to this matter. There's been no violation with respect to the ethics principles that you've all looked at and approved as recently as October. And I thank you for allowing me the short amount of time I've tried to take here tonight to address these matters. I'll be happy to respond to questions if they arise later in the evening. I did want to note that with respect to my comments at the last meeting, November fifteenth, Councilmember Coors did, in fact, request that we prepare some verbatim minutes that covered certain comments that I made. Those are a part of the yellow folder. They were not available at the time the agenda was printed, but I dare say that everyone in our community is probably happy that they're there, who has a passionate interest in this matter. So those minutes are there. They're in the yellow folder. They're also on the city's website. And as a practical matter, they detail my conversation with Mr. Coors regarding certain ten ninety issues. These are dicey things, and during our public meeting, the very successful, I think, community forum we had a short while ago, we had some questions and inquiries on this matter, and I want to say that with respect to that meeting, all the comments there, it's a little bit dicey because I said at that meeting, and I'll say again here, I don't think that the proper place for me to be giving you legal advice, as my client, is this room in front of the community. When we look at those things, I prefer to do that for you in closed session. That's why the law allows closed session. Cities are not at a disadvantage as opposed to other litigants of an organizational nature. We have the same rights. And as a practical matter, I understand and value the tradition that this council has established for public integrity and transparency. I know that's why we adopted those principles, and I know that's why we have taken consistent- I know that's why we adopted those principles, and I know that's why we have taken consistently, Dr. Reddy certainly made it very clear to me before I accepted the job, this is a transparency plus environment. This is a place where nothing short of absolute public integrity will fly. So concluding my remarks, the verbatim minutes are in there. If you push me, I'll do something I don't want to do and give you more legal commentary in open session. Mr. Shons probably feels the same way. We, as lawyers, don't like to do that because, for one, we're attached to our bar cards. So there you have it.
Mayor, may I ask a yes or no question? Yes. So I'd like a yes or no answer from you, Mr. Cottin, and Mr. Shons separately. Are you completely confident that there was no violation of the Brown Act on either counts? Yes or no?
I'll defer to Mr. Shons first.
Mr. Shons?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cottin? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, the staff?
I think they can wait till the item comes up. You're staying, right, Mr. Shons?
Yes.
This item? Okay. Then I will ask you my questions at that point. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Reddy, any further presentation?
No, we're ready to go forward with the agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Mills. Okay, Ms. Hart, you want to take a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Coors?
No.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Mayor Protam Fote?
Yes.
Mayor Moon?
Yes.
Agenda has been approved, three, two, noting the no votes for Councilmember Coors and Councilmember Roberts.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hart. Next item is public testimony. For agenda items only. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council only on agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Ms. Hart, where are we doing the timekeeping?
Arnesta will put the clock up on the screen.
It will be on the screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first speaker is Charles Lamort, then followed by Frank Tyson, and then Lou Stewart.
Good evening. My name is Charles Lamort, and I'm here now to speak about item four A. After much discussion on social media and in the Desert Sun articles about the revised Virgin Hotel proposal, I have many questions for you tonight. To the city attorney and David Reddy, if the TOT agreement was originally voted on in December 2014 by Steve Pugnay and then transferred to the Virgin Hotel, isn't it subject to ten ninety protections if Pugnay or John Westman is convicted? Also, if the Virgin Hotel was entitled in April of 2016 and the TOT was transferred to the Virgin in May of 2016 when John Westman was managing partner of Westman Development, isn't it subject to ten ninety protections if he is convicted? Three, if the draft agreement that council saw on July twenty-six, 2017, was a simple amendment of the TOT agreement, did that not give away, that did not give away ten ninety protection, does the new TOT agreement give away the ten ninety rights in the event of a conviction? Another question, who negotiated this agreement and what did the city get by surrendering ten ninety rights? To Mayor Moon, Councilmembers Fote and Mills, what is the rush? These issues deserve a full hearing. Why don't you trust a new council to sort this out? To Mayor Moon, didn't you campaign on transparency? Why does it not apply to this issue?
Okay, thank you.
To Michael Braun.
Mr. Lamort, your time is up. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Frank Tyson, followed by Lou Stewart, and then Patrick Weiss.
As far as the Virgin Hotel is concerned, we have been giving away hotel approvals and TOT like drunken sailors. And also, City Hall doesn't seem to care anymore about mountain views. Now, I heard our attorney say that he loved this town, but what is his personal philosophy about development? We don't know. That's very important because people's legal opinions are colored by their personal beliefs. Why did we have all the fuss about Gorsuch? Because exactly that kind of issue. And staff and the city attorney are very important for what happens. After all, it wasn't just Pugnay at all himself that did all the stuff about downtown. Staff also had a role in this. Now, I've been involved in litigation a number of times, but generally when the rules are broken. And I sort of feel a smell of rat here. I feel there's a white-bus job going on, even with hired guns coming in. I think that this city council ought to postpone this issue. Don't try to expose yourself unless you just like to go to court all the time. I think, what reason do you have not to postpone it? I think you've heard a lot of reviews from the community, and I'm absolutely flabbergasted. And I'm going to tell you, if the Desert Sun and Frank Tyson are on the same side of the issue, you better not ignore it.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Next speaker is Lou Stewart, followed by Patrick Weiss, followed by Michael Kessinger.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, esteemed council members, hardworking staff. I know you're having a long day. Palm Springs has enjoyed a reputation as a world-class tourist destination during the forty-five years I've lived here. Developers offered enhancements to their projects for the privilege of locating here. Incentives were never necessary. For this reason, I have opposed the massive welfare for developers programs that the past councils have tailored for John Westman. Tonight, I request that the second reading of the Virgin Hotel incentive package be revert to the being a first reading as the Transparency Council recommends. In light of large unfunded liabilities and potential looming fiscal shortfalls, it is unfair to the newly elected members to be saddled with the questionable financial and political jeopardy that may result from this vote. I directly request that you change your vote, Mayor Moon, to allow your new colleagues to begin their tenures on their own terms and without the responsibility of explaining the failures of past councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Next is Patrick Weiss, followed by Michael Kessinger, and then Emily Hemphill.
I'm here to say that I think this second reading should be completely waived and brought up again when the new council meets. Part of that is I feel that, given the legal ramifications possibly of passing this, it may not only affect Westman, well, of course, if Westman gets indicted, it will obviously may affect the people on the council who voted for this, since you're voting on something that's basically is criminal, since there are bribery charges. So, and to safeguard, I think, the future city council, I think this should be waived. I think the consequences could be not good for the city if you go ahead with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Next is Michael Kessinger, followed by Emily Hemphill, and then Michael Braun.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Michael Kessinger, and I've lived in Palm Springs since 1978. Having worked my entire career in commercial real estate, I've watched business and political cycles come and go. The most damaging and financially devastating cycle took place in Palm Springs in the late eighties and early nineties, when retail, restaurants, and hotel development moved east. Retail went to Al Paseo in Palm Desert. Hotel developments went to Indian Wells, namely the Hyatt Grand Champion and the five-hundred-and-sixty-room Esmeralda Hotel. And large-scale, big-box retail followed to Palm Desert and La Quinta. Gone from Palm Springs were Saks Fifth Avenue, Robinsons, Cartier, Louis Vuitton, Yves Saint Laurent, and Rodier Paris, as well as other high-end retail establishments. Palm Springs is successfully capturing national and international attention as a highly-desired destination spot. We don't want to lose the momentum we have gained. The Museum Market Plaza and the new Rowan Hotel are catalysts for drawing more visitors to our town. The Virgin Hotel is one of the top hotel brands in the world. It would be unwise to miss this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. With the development of the Virgin Hotel, Palm Springs would expand its worldwide recognition as a place to vacation. It would ensure financial stability for its future. I urge you to vote yes on this highly anticipated, exciting project. Also, I want to give a big shout-out to our retiring city council members, Ginny Fote and Chris Mills. Thank you for your dedication and outstanding service to the city of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessinger. Next is Emily Hemphill, followed by Michael Braun, and then Doug Huth.
Good evening, Mayor and council. In deciding whether or not to approve the second reading for the Virgin Development Agreement, the key issue in front of the council is whether the Virgin is in the best interest of the city. Your consultant says that the Virgin brings you a thirty million dollar gain, brings you two hundred jobs, brings new people to Palm Springs that have not come here before, and also responds to the needs that your convention and Visitors Bureau has expressed for the need for hotel rooms in order to accommodate the conventions they're trying to do. For those who want to punish John Westman, let me make sure everyone understands, he has relinquished all rights to any profits from the operation of the Virgin Hotel, and we have provided written documentation, both to the city manager and the city attorney, to that effect. As for ten ninety, the developer's purpose in seeking the development agreement is to eliminate the cloud of uncertainty that the ten ninety issues and contentious hearings like this have placed on this project, because with those in place, this is not financeable. By trying to reserve those ten ninety rights, which are elusive, because you are the five people that have made every single decision with respect to the Virgin, Steve Pugnay had no role in any of them. So if you want to reintroduce that into the development agreement, then we're wasting our time because the project is not financeable. It's the job of the city council to move forward for the benefit of the citizens of Palm Springs, and I ask you not to let the temptation of being judge and jury for John Westman cloud the decision as to what is the best thing for Palm Springs. If you think you don't want thirty million dollars, you don't want two hundred jobs, and you don't want new clientele, then by all means, vote no. If you want those things for your community, then you need to vote yes, because without the development agreement, the Virgin will not happen.
Thank you, Ms. Hemphill. Next is Michael Braun, followed by Doug Huth, and then Roger Tansey.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Michael Braun. I'm the president of Grid Development, and the Virgin Project is my project and not John Westman's project. I wanted to thank this council for giving me and my team early this year the opportunity to continue to work on the downtown project. We have faced many challenges in the last year, but working cooperatively, we have been able to move forward towards an exciting future for the city. The city, the community, and Grid have come to know each other well. We have finished together a hundred and fifty million new experience for downtown Palm Springs. The Rowan Hotel by Kimpton and the new Starbucks store, which opened November seventeenth, are buzzing with activity and excitement. Many other exciting stores will open in the next few months as well. Now imagine we're going to add a Virgin Hotel. As they depart soon from this council, Grid Development wishes to give special recognition to Ginny Fote and Chris Mills. We had many challenging times together with one purpose in mind only, the completion of this downtown project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. Next is Doug Huth, followed by Roger Tansey, and then David Friedman.
Hi, I'm Doug Huth, and I'm a Palm Springs resident. And on the same subject, I was, some of my thoughts are, if the Virgin Hotel is not financially viable on its own without the TOT, then I question the financial viability as a whole, and maybe we don't really need something that's running on such a slim margin that it may not be successful. The TOT that was given to John Westman was part of the bribery allegations which are going to court, and the outcome of that is unknown. So why would the city want to waive the ten ninety, its ten ninety rights unnecessarily? There's no requirement that the future city council acts on it. Therefore, I'm just wondering, why is the city council, the existing city council, pushing via this meeting tonight to tie the hands of the incoming city council?
Thank you, Mr. Huth. Next is Roger Tansey, followed by David Friedman, and then Lisa Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor Moon. Council members, good evening, and staff. I'm pleased to hear again the promise of two hundred jobs. Unfortunately, Westman Development never puts that in writing. It's only on Facebook. We have apparently the most expensive tot abatement program in the entire state. I don't understand why. Other cities negotiate concessions, things like preference for local hiring. If they're going to say that they will hire two hundred people, let's put that in writing, and let's give preference to Palm Springs residents. What is the city getting up, giving, what is the city getting by giving up close to fifty million dollars? I don't understand why the city cannot negotiate. And I would like to make it absolutely clear, I have not heard anyone who is complaining about the tot abatement program saying they don't want the Virgin Hotel. They want the city to, for example, do what Cathedral City does, which is give discounts for in hotels that have gotten a tot abatement. Why doesn't Westman Development give Palm Springs citizens a discount? In other words, why don't you try to negotiate something for us, the citizens? Mayor Moon, you ran on transparency. I was on the Ethics Task Force, I was chairman, co-chairman of the Campaign Finance Committee. The way this has been done, the city council has violated policies that it has recommended adopting, and that's not a good way to start. You ran on transparency. You wore an FBI jacket and a broom because you were going to sweep out City Hall. Bring that broom back. The way this is being handled just seems morally repugnant. There's just something wrong here. I don't understand why the city should roll over to Mr. Westman or his company and not ask for anything in return.
Thank you, Mr. Tansey, your time is up.
Thank you, and I'd just like to close by thanking Ginny for her service.
Next is David Friedman, followed by Lisa Middleton, and then Jim Wanless.
Good evening, Mayor Moon, Mayor Protam Fote, and council members. My name is David Friedman. I am also speaking on behalf of Roger Tansey. As he noted, we served last year on the Ethics Transparency and Governmental Reform Task Force, and we're also speaking on item four A, the Virgin Hotel Development Agreement. As noted in our letter included in your staff report, we have substantial concerns on the lack of transparency when this matter was approved on November fifteenth. Given the narrow judicial construction of the Brown Act's closed-section exception, we don't think the discussion of the development agreement at closed session would qualify as pending litigation, the discussion of which in open session would prejudice the city. The development agreement is, in essence, a contractual novation that cuts the link to the 2014 Operations Covenant for the Marriott, and it is not among the contracts entitled to closed-session protection. In addition, the city did not follow its own transparency policies adopted based on the task force's recommendations. Mr. Westman's ownership interest in the entity that owns the parcel was not included in the staff report posted prior to the meeting and was only provided at the time of the meeting to those of us present then. The public had no notice of this ownership interest or the novation issue two weeks ago and was thus effectively prevented from directly addressing council on a matter of clear public interest, as we see tonight. This council has shown its commitment to transparency by creating the task force and adopting many of its recommendations, which exceed state law. Now that Mr. Westman's ownership has been disclosed, the city attorney has noted certain communications errors on the fifteenth, and the novation issue is being discussed in open session with an opportunity for public comment this evening, council should continue on this transparency path and remove any doubt on the validity of its action on the fifteenth by having action taken tonight be on first reading. Failing that, the new council should rescind the ordinance next month. Failing that, the new Council should rescind the ordinance next month before it goes into effect and start over. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Next is Lisa Middleton, followed by Jim Wanless, and then Barbara Beatty.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, first I want to congratulate Ginny Fout and Chris Mills for their incredible service to our city. And while I have disagreements on this issue, nothing changes my appreciation for your work. We have a difference of opinion. I believe that lame-duck sessions should be reserved for matters that are entirely ministerial or those that have an unalterable deadline. This matter meets neither of those tests. I believe that the City Council in 2015 exhibited the right approach when it canceled the later November meetings and left the new City Council an opportunity to begin fresh in the review of the downtown project. I support the Virgin Hotel. I voted for the Virgin Hotel on the Planning Commission. I want to see this hotel built. But I believe this agreement is weakened by approval during a lame-duck session. When the new Council takes office, there will probably be only one member of that City Council that has voted to affirm this agreement, but it is the new City Council that is going to have to monitor and manage the deadlines and manage the execution of this contract. Lastly, the city is giving up its 1090 rights. I could not support the city doing that, and I would not vote next week to remove our 1090 rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember-elect Lisa Middleton. Next is Jim Wanless, followed by Barbara Beatty, and then Councilmember-elect Kristi Holstidge.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I wanted to congratulate you on the continuing implementation of what I think is a remarkable public-private partnership program that you put in place or was put in place nearly 10 years ago by previous Councilmembers. I also wanted to congratulate you on the continuation to implement the museum-specific plan. These two programs and policies, of course, have been greatly -- have been great controversies in this city, but I think any reasonable review of what has transpired with respect to the performance of those two policies has to be considered in the great benefit that those two policies have provided the city and its people of the city. These two policies have enhanced Palm Springs' brand. These two policies have increased the economic activity in the city. These two policies have grown the city's tax base. But most importantly, I think, these two policies have greatly enhanced the well-being and enjoyment of the people of the city, and I think also the people of this entire valley. So I wanted to congratulate you on continuing those two policies, and I also wanted to encourage you to approve the Virgin Hotel Development Agreement, because I think that is an important feature with respect to the continuation of this program. For those people who have argued that the Development Agreement will take away and clawback their 1090 rights, I believe that that is only a subterfuge, because if that is the case, you will not get the Virgin Hotel. It cannot be financed without clawback contingency in place. So your choice tonight, or the choice of anybody with respect to that, is whether or not you want the Virgin Hotel.
Mr. Wanless, time is up. Time is up. Thank you. Next is Barbara Beatty, followed by Councilmember-elect Kristi Holstidge.
Lisa Middleton, you were awesome tonight. Thank you too, Chris and Ginny. It's probably the only time I'll have to thank you and for your time. I am really confused right now by what Mary Hemphill said, that Westman would not have any financial -- he would not benefit financially, but his name is on the LLC, so somebody's going to have to explain that one to me. And this is such a no-brainer. I can't even understand why we're talking about this. If Westman is on the LLC, which he is, and he is convicted of a crime, a bribery, we're still going to pay him 75% of the TOT for the next 30 years? Hello, Palm Springs, you're crazy if we do that. I can't figure this out. I can't figure out why we're defending it. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate JR and Jeff for the stand that they took on November 15th. Thank you, Lisa Middleton. Kristi, I don't know what you're going to say, but I believe you're going to say what Lisa says, and if you guys all vote for this, you don't care about Palm Springs. And Mayor Moon, I adore you. Ginny, you and I have never gotten along, but -- [laughing] And Chris, I think you're great, but for the sake of the city, for us as citizens, this is taxpayers' dollars that we need to be vigilant over. And I'm just amazed that we would give this away if Westman is indicted and he is on this LLC. And Mary Hemphill, I have no idea what you're talking about when you said he won't benefit financially. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Next is Councilmember-elect Kristi Holstidge.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I'm here to say publicly that I support the Virgin Hotel and this project. I haven't said that publicly, and so I wanted to assure the outgoing City Council members who've dedicated, I think, 30 years for you, Chris Mills, and 14 years to Councilmember Ginny Fout, being this only City Councilwoman through that time. I want to thank you for your service and your legacy, and without your work over those last 14 years, we wouldn't be standing here in front of you and able to vote on this project. So I want to thank you. I wasn't going to speak on this issue in concern that it would be construed as me wanting to vote on an issue, and it's not about that at all, but I thought about the last almost year I spent campaigning and talking to residents and voters and citizens of Palm Springs who care about transparency and ethics and public input, and I think we have a lot of work to do in rebuilding public trust together and coming up with community solutions that work for all of us with community partners. This is an important issue that deserves serious and thorough discussion and thought and research. I look forward to doing that on this and every issue. And I hope that you'll give the new City Council, who will be working in partnership with Grid Development on this project, the opportunity to vote on it, so we can make a clear message to the community as a community, that our Palm Springs values, that we value the Virgin Hotel, that we want to see it built, we want to continue the momentum of the Palm Springs downtown revitalization and the renaissance that you've worked on to allow this to flourish. So thank you. Thank you for all your work, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember-elect Holstidge. Next is Lanny Swerdlov on Item 4C, the cannabis question. Next after him will be Rick Pantelli and then Joy Brown Meredith.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Palm Springs City Council very much for recognizing the importance of having onsite consumption with thousands of visitors coming here to Palm Springs. They're going to need places to legally consume it, and that's what onsite consumption places. I do have objection, though, to the fact that all onsite consumption places must have a dispensary license. That's what's in here. Now, I understand from Mr. Kopkin that you're going to have an unlimited number of dispensary licenses, and you may, you know, make the requirements not quite as onerous as it is if you're going to open up a walk-in dispensary where you're selling dispensary items, but we're talking about small business owners, small restaurant owners, that would like to have a section of their restaurant aside where people can consume cannabis. If you're going to require them to get a sales license, not only will they have to meet all your requirements, but they will also have to get a state sales license, which is very expensive and very onerous. This is making it impossible for small business owners, small restaurant owners, to have a section of their restaurant where they can have cannabis consumption. It's making it impossible for somebody to open up a small social club. There is no reason why you cannot have it just so a person can get a little license or whatever to have a section where they allow cannabis, where their customers to bring their own cannabis with them to consume. There is nothing in state law that has any requirement on that. There is no such thing as a state onsite consumption license. So you are perfectly legal and within your right to say, hey, Joe, you're at your Joe Restaurant, you can have a cannabis section here, and you don't have to get a special license. I hope you will consider that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Swerdlow. Next is Rick Pantelli, followed by Joy Brown Meredith.
Good evening. As a resident here since 1974 and a business owner on Palm Canyon, I'm here both as a patient and a principal. I can tell you right now, the one thing we know is, there are no experts at this. There is no one here in this room that knows what the hell is going on with this medical marijuana ordinance as far as the state is concerned. We're learning as we go. Like, I would have never thought in the end the lounges would be so important. And this is why the lounges are important, because people will come here to use them. Some people might even change their plans and say, let's go there instead, but we have to make sure they're good. But more importantly, we want to make sure that people that don't want to have marijuana have what they come for. And so I think that when we're making this ordinance, we make it for people that do smoke marijuana and don't, and we have to give the people that do smoke marijuana places to go, so that when people go home, they go, I was in Palm Springs, and they have marijuana, but it didn't affect my trip anyway. Or guess what? I wasn't going to go there, but now I'm going to go to Palm Springs because of their ordinance. So there's people that will come here for both reasons, and we only want positive comments. Marijuana is not for everyone, and the lounges are more volatile than ever before. I ask to reduce the limits to zero or to 500 feet. And you could consider two classes of lounges. You could have a small lounge. I think everyone thinks lounge, little bar, but you could have a bowling alley with a lot of room that was a lounge and would really give room for the people coming for Coachella and the film festivals. You've spent years removing the stigma, and if you do this ordinance wrong, you'll recreate the stigma. Treat it like beer. Treat it like beer, like Washington. Personally, in business, Washington uses a alcohol of marijuana and cannabis. Mr. Roberts, I'm sure that if you trust the designers, they'll come up with some great-looking facades that you'll never see wrong. It's a new industry. They'll have new designs. Einstein said, if you can't explain it, you don't understand it. Good luck.
Mr. Pantelli, thank you. Next is Joy Brown Meredith, followed by Steve Rosenberg.
My name is Joy Brown Meredith, and I'm here tonight to ask you to please consider postponing 4C. I think that there just is still more discussion to be had between the merchants, between the residents that are bordering downtown and uptown, and I'm here -- you know, this is a situation here where I know that it could be something profitable for me to do. I'm just not sure that it's been thought through thoroughly enough for downtown and uptown, where we're already going through so many changes right now. So I just would like to request on behalf of the Board of Main Street, who did vote unanimously to just not support it at this time, the Planning Commission also voted to not have it at this time. The cannabis owners existing now voted also not to have it at this time, just in these zones. I don't understand why it has to be pushed through quite so quickly. You had first reading last week, second reading this week. I just don't understand why you don't have to have this done by January 1st. This is a zone change. So I just wanted to request that, and that's it. Chris and Ginny, thanks for all of your years. I'm sure that you'll be looking forward to some time off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meredith. Next is Steve Rosenberg, and that will be our last speaker on agenda items unless someone turns a card in at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Steve Rosenberg, and I'm a longtime resident of the city of Palm Springs. I spoke to members of the Subcommittee on Cannabis earlier this week and gave them in writing some information about separation distances that I thought was relevant to the ordinance that's before us this evening. The ordinance, as it was introduced last week, had only slight distance requirements in certain cases. Both Attachment A and Attachment B this week, two revised versions, take those into entirely new directions, and I think that that's unwise. I think that we need to proceed with the ordinance as first read last week, with limited if or no separation distances required, depending on the nature of the business. Two minutes doesn't allow us to go into all the details, but certainly there's no reason to have separation distances between, let's say, a lounge and a dispensary, or a lounge and a manufacturing facility, and so on. I suggest we go ahead with the ordinance, we get our zoning in place so that businesses and individuals can begin to make their plans and move forward on an important new industry that's going to bring $5 million of additional revenue to this city in the next fiscal year. $5 million. It's going to happen. It's going to happen here, and we can do it right. If there's problems downline, we can amend our zoning. We can institute separation distances. I don't predict those problems. I don't foresee them. Chris, I know you were a great skeptic of this when it first started, and fortunately, your fears, your concerns with the existing collectives have not materialized. I think there's a bright future here, and I think we should proceed as originally read last week. Thank you. And by the way, Chris, Ginny, thank you both so, so much for everything you've done for this city in the last decades.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Ms. Hart, do you have any other speakers?
No, sir. No more.
Seeing that, we will close public testimony on agenda items. City Council's committee and City Manager's comments and reports, this time is set aside for the City Council to provide additional general comments, reports, and announcements. Additionally, this time is set aside for the City Manager to update the City Council on important items initiated by staff or previously requested by the City Council. City Manager?
Mayor, don't have a specific report this evening. Thank you.
Anyone up here? Okay, seeing none, we will then move to -- we have no consent items, no public hearings, no legislative, and the next item is unfinished business. The first item is Item 4A under unfinished business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1940 approving a Development Agreement with DTPSB3 LLC related to construction of the Virgin Hotel located on Block B1 of the downtown Palm Springs specific plan at the northeast corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way, Case Number 5.1204 SP amended, Case Number 3.3908, and Case Number 5.1427. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, the staff report is hopefully clear, and it is a total of not even five full pages. There's a lot of material attached to the staff report, and obviously, we've been dealing with many documents since time immemorial, it seems, with respect to this project. I want to highlight for you some of these business principal disclosure issues which have come up quite a bit. You'll note that the staff report for tonight's meeting is very much similar, very, very similar in content, presentation, with past staff reports, that is, the July staff reports that I prepared for you regarding the Virgin, and the one that I submitted November 15th that was in your yellow folder and before you and provided to the public. In addition to the information we had at that point in time, though, there is some new information, and I want to highlight that, because there have been various statements through the evening, and I can certainly respect and understand confusion on the part of the public where they don't have necessarily all the information that we get in real time. The staff report is our effort to do that. And what you'll note is that with respect to the ownership of the companies that we've been talking about, we received information and included it in the staff report pertaining to specific percentages of ownership of Palm Springs Promenade LLC, the developer of the Virgin, management information regarding Grid, operational management information, ownership information as to Grid, trustee information as to the trust that we had referenced in our previous disclosures regarding ownership and membership in DTPSB3 LLC. And for the record, and so there's no lack of clarity, the Westman entity is no longer associated with or affiliated with this project in any way, shape, or form. That's not the status quo. That is the past, but that's not where we are on November 29th, 2017. This disclosure is accurate. We have additional information from the developer and the developer -- accurate. We have additional information from the developer and the developer's accountant specifically included here with this documentation in your staff report tonight. And as a practical matter, there's also a letter from Mr. Westman that Ms. Hemphill did allude to in her remarks. As your attorney, I can tell you, I've had dialogue with her, I've had dialogue with Mr. Noes, the accountant, excuse me, and even with individual members of the council regarding these issues. What I'll say here for purposes of the staff report at the public meeting is simply that Mr. Westman, based on the documents that I've reviewed, no longer will get direct money out of this project. That doesn't mean that, as a practical matter, I've seen complete documentation that divests him completely with respect to community property interests that he might have in his current life, and my understanding is they may be separating. But I don't want to get too deep into the Westman's personal details, but a lot of this can and perhaps will be discussed tonight. I don't know. I'm not going to do it. The bottom line is that there's a community property potential interest on a certain level, although, to a degree, that community property divestment has already taken place. That DTPSB3 interest that Mr. Westman's wife has, it's not a community interest that she holds, but it's an indirect interest for Mr. Westman to the extent that Mrs. Westman's heirs would potentially benefit from that. So I don't want to mislead the council or the community that there may be an indirect interest on some collateral level. I would leave it to the developer to answer any council questions in that regard. With respect to the statements that are made regarding ownership, again, that's detailed in the staff report, I don't accept, and I don't think the council should, the fact that there's an allegation here that the city's information was either inaccurate or uninformed. We worked very closely with the developer to ensure accuracy, and to be candid, the developer's been extremely forthcoming and very cooperative with respect to all of these issues. I would say that as to the actual development agreement, the staff report's clear with respect to the Planning Commission's recommendation and their vote as to consistency with the general plan and the specific plan that's applicable here. They recommended certain conditions be added to the development agreement. Those have, in fact, been added. As recently as today, the council was provided, per council member request, with a red line of the development agreement that reflects all of these changes in four-part harmony, so that anyone who wants to see exactly what was changed can see exactly what was changed. We listed in the staff report a modification to the section dealing with operating memoranda. You'll recall that operating memoranda are somewhat new concept here in Palm Springs to deal with sort of ministerial minor changes that the developer and the city staff want to make. Those are not intended to ever address major issues, which obviously would need to come to the council as an amendment. We did, in fact, take the action we did as a city on November 3rd. We've had the Brown Act violations alleged. You've heard those addressed by legal counsel. The people who spoke tonight, Mr. Sfreeman and Tansey, they expressed their sincere concern about the integrity of the proceedings. Your legal counsel's told you, no, that's not a concern for us. So whatever action you take tonight, please take it based on the merits of the project as you see it and the development agreement. That is our request as a staff and certainly as your legal counsel. I'm here to go through, with your permission, some of the changes that we made in the development agreement that are not actually reflected in the staff report. And when I say they're not reflected there, I actually had some very constructive direction from council member Kors, and they are not at all substantive changes, which is respect to deal points, if you will, of the Virgin deal as it's been presented in the first reading. I can detail those for you. I have the language here. The first change that we contemplate, and by the way, I want to say, the developer's amenable to all of these changes. I spoke with the developer's attorney, and she's agreed to all of these changes. There was one change that we recommended that she didn't agree with, and I've spoken with the council member, and he agreed to drop it. So the first one is that in 4.03, we're going to recite the fact that in addition to the consideration being provided in the termination of the restated covenant, that we're also expecting that the developer will, in fact, develop the project. That is what this is about. There were questions asked, well, what's being done by the developer? Is it enough is a question for the city council, but the developer is developing the project. We've also decided to clarify a reference in 4.03 to the commencement of construction. We are conforming it to the performance schedule, which is a more specific standard. We thought specifics with respect to timelines on construction, particularly in light of some of the concerns that you heard expressed during the town hall, unfinished projects, projects that don't move. I know it was very important to this council to have a performance schedule. We expressed in this document that the city has relied very heavily on the developer's assurances with respect to the performance schedule. The developer agreed to that language, and in that vein, we've agreed that 4.03 will be changed to reference the developer's covenant to secure a building permit for vertical construction of the corn shell. The date operative there is March 31st, 2020. The next change is parallel to the one I said would be in 4.03, similar change in 5.02 with respect to permitting the development. The city is agreeing to permit the development in accordance with this document, and we would make the same reference with respect to securing a building permit for vertical construction of the corn shell as opposed to simply commencing construction. Additional changes that the developer and I have agreed upon, which, again, aren't of substance, add to Section 7.09, a requirement with respect to project timing, that all project timing, despite the owner's or developer's discretion, and it says sole discretion, is that it's also in accordance with this agreement. This agreement is very clear that the city has relied specifically upon the performance schedule, and that a significant deviation from the performance schedule, not may, but shall be reviewed by the city council in the context of an annual review. We've also added a reference, which was just inadvertently left off, to Section 7.09A, because it's 7.09A and B that are addressed in Section 7.09C when we start talking about that significant deviation from the performance schedule. We want to keep the developer to the schedule the developer wants to keep to the schedule. One thing that is unusual about this development agreement, and I don't know if I reported it on November 15th, is really the extraordinarily short term of the development agreement. Typically, we have development agreements of a 20- or 30-year term. This development agreement is much, much shorter in its contemplated term. It's in the performance schedule. Mr. Braun and his company want to plan to open this hotel in the year 2022. There's a performance schedule through which they can do that. There are only a very limited number of things that constitute an acceptable delay, and the city has the right to an annual review, where it can look at all of these things, each and every one of them, on an annual basis, and should, by law, do so. I would also add, with respect to the provision on prevailing wage, I've added some language, that the final and non-appellable matter of law that I referenced with respect to the developer's capacity to modify prevailing wage, we're going to say that that cannot be challenged in a court of competent jurisdiction, or otherwise secures a final and non-appellable order by a court of competent jurisdiction, consistent with that DIR determination that they're looking for. Certainly, I can take questions on some of this. It's very technical. With respect to Section 8.01, we wanted to clarify that it's not just the parties as an abstract, but it's the developer and the city council would need to agree to any amendment of the agreement. We've also added that the performance schedule will not be modified by an operating memorandum. In other words, staff won't be able to do that. I think staff would have been crazy to try to do so, but it's now against the development agreement to do so. In terms of the remaining portion of the document, I think that has the total of the changes that are contemplated. My request is that if there's a motion to approve this item on second or first reading, that that motion include these changes, because I think that, given the developer's agreement with these changes and the city's proposal of them, they're not controversial, they're not substantive. They certainly do not create a second reading if the council's intent is to proceed with second reading. And I think that concludes my remarks. I'm available for questions. I would say, as an admonition, as your legal counsel, when we start talking about 1090s and the city's rights, there's a certain threshold which, after you cross it, there's no return. If you waive attorney-client privilege on a certain level, it's gone, not just here tonight, but forever on the issue. So please be circumspect in asking for any of those waivers of attorney-client privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Cocken. We have questions of staff. Councilman Kors?
So just going back to the ownership point, and this is not about punishing John Westman. And in fact, my understanding of the law is, as it pertains to a 1090 claim, we don't have to be specific, if you prefer, it doesn't matter who the current owner is. If there was a violation and the contract's violated and they sell, if there's a violation, the violation remains, correct?
Well said. A 1090 is really about a contract. It's about a contract that, if it is based on that type of a corrupt agreement, is void at its inception. So in this particular instance, absent some action on this development agreement, status quo right now would be that you still have the potential, potential, I emphasize, for a clawback as to the original, original operating covenant for the AC Marriott Hotel, which was transferred, you'll recall, by council action in 2016, to the Virgin project, which is before you tonight. The thing that's different is that we are now expanding and extending the term of that operating covenant for the TOT sharing beyond the December 31st, 2017 deadline that's articulated in the ordinance. And I want to say something, because in my discussions with the mayor before tonight, he asked me about the development agreement itself. You have to do a development agreement if you want the Virgin. You can't have the Virgin if you don't do a development agreement. The reason for that is that the specific plan in this project contemplated a development agreement for one very important purpose, to get to the 69-foot height approved for this project. As council members have indicated tonight, the project was much grander and bigger and everything else, and this city council, your staff, I think, worked very hard to create the project that's currently envisioned. The development agreement is essential, so you have to have it. It's per a footnote in the specific plan.
Okay. That was way beyond my question.
Oh, I apologize. I forgot to say it.
So just focusing on my questions, so people understand it, and the reason I asked Gary Shonz to come, and I appreciate you making that happen, is because you're one of the state's experts. It's a reason we brought you on board. So people know whether or not John Westman an owner is not relevant when it comes to 1090. If people want to punish him, that's a separate issue. It's not anything I've ever said, but the issue is simply the contract, correct?
I know Mr. Shonz's opinion. I want him to give it on the record, if that's okay.
So please let him. Yes, thank you.
Yes, it's tied to the contract.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Under 1090, the contract that was approved or voted on by a body like the council, where any member of that body had a financial interest in the contract, and in this circumstance, if the mayor received a bribe from any source to approve that contract, then he had a financial interest in it, and when he voted, that violated 1090, and the contract is void. The clawback provisions have to obviously trace to either proceeds or profits from that contract that is void.
And just so it's clear, that even if Mr. Westman sells it, Grit Development sells it, and totally non-related third parties buy that, take over that contract, it doesn't stop the 1090, correct? It's the contract, not the people.
I can speak for myself and say yes, and Mr. Shonz is free to answer as well.
Correct. The contract is void.
Right.
Transferring a void contract does not...
Rights go, obligations go together. Yeah. I just, I understand that, but I think it's a question that's come up a lot, and I want to make sure people understood that. Other thing I want to say, because obviously, my role in the ethics and transparency tied to this issue, is the reason we have this is, yes, it's so the public knows who's involved, but primarily, it's so the people voting know if they have a conflict. That's why we're doing that. And on this issue, even though it should have been in the original staff report, we made sure that it was reported that night, so all of us and everyone on the planning commission knew, so they could make their independent determinations if they have a conflict. So that is the reason for that provision. The only other question I want to ask, and I think it's, you've already stated it, but it's what you stated at the last meeting, the city attorney, but some members of council have said the exact opposite since then, so I want it, just so it's clear, and we're clear what we're going to be voting on tonight. What you said at the last meeting is that the agreements that are before the council this evening, if they're approved, as they're presented in the staff report, there'd be no feasible way for the city of Palm Springs to seek to recover the potential share of TOT that might be realized by this property through a court proceeding. That is a right that today, under the existing agreements, my analysis is indicating that we would have that capacity. And I know your position, because you've said it, but now that we have our outside counsel on it, I want to know if that's consistent with your opinion, that presently, we have it. Doesn't mean we're going to win, right? Having a claim doesn't mean you're going to win ever in litigation or anything else.
I want to be clear for his sake and for the public's sake. You're not asking him as to any session, closed or otherwise, that you've ever had with him. You're asking for his opinion, whether the verbatim minutes are accurate, given his understanding of this case.
And his understanding is one of the state's top experts of the law.
Thank you.
On this issue.
My understanding, yes, that is my understanding of the law as to the verbatim minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Any other questions? You have a Councilman Roberts?
With respect to the 1090 section, is it true that even with the indictment where we are right now, not including a conviction, the city could have pursued its rights under the 1090 and unwound any contract that was formally made with the Westman Development Company?
I'll speak to that. And I'm really loathe to get far into this, and I want to tell you why.
Eddie, I don't want you to get far into it. I'm really looking for a yes or a no.
We can and we have, we have a lawsuit pending on exactly this issue.
Okay. So we can pursue the 1090 section right now. We don't have to wait for convictions if we don't want to. So if that's correct, that's all I need to hear.
You've heard it from me. If you want to ask Mr. Shonz, he's here.
I would like Mr. Shonz to respond to that.
I agree with that. That is correct. The city can pursue a civil action under 1092.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Any discussion? Who goes first? Councilman Roberts?
I'll start it unless somebody else wants to. Okay, I'll start it. This is not an issue tonight for me on whether we want the Virgin Hotel or don't want the Virgin Hotel. I will speak for myself in saying that I have consistently supported the Virgin Hotel. In fact, I'll go a step further. As a planning commissioner and as a downtown Subcommittee member, I've helped to shape and mold what we know as the design for the Virgin Hotel today. And I think that the design that finally came forward on that, for that project, is a really good one. And I think it would be a positive addition for Palm Springs, and it's cited well and fits well into the new downtown development. I also want to state for that, well, I want to state the obvious. There are people who've come out and said that, well, there's a lot of misinformation, unfortunately, floating out there, but some have come forward and said that we, some of us don't want to approve this TOT extension and development agreement because we don't want the Virgin. This city council has consistently and publicly stated its support, individually and as a group, for the Virgin Hotel. So I don't understand how that misinformation got out there, but I certainly hope that tonight we can correct that. How much do I support the hotel? Do I support it enough that I would trade away our protection? Do I support it enough that I would trade away our protections and rights on Section 1090? Would I trade away the protections and rights for our community for a shiny new hotel? No, I can't do that. It wasn't what I was elected to do. I believe I was elected first and foremost to protect our community, and secondarily, think about how to develop it and/or not develop it. This isn't an issue for me about punishing anybody or punishing John Westman. Frankly, I don't care how he has shifted his ownership in this project. It's irrelevant to me. This all comes back to one thing, and that is, are we willing to give up the protections that we now have, that we may or may never pursue on this particular case? I'm not willing to do that. There's nothing that could convince me to do that. And more importantly, there's not a reason to do that. We often have to sit up here as council members, and we have to make really hard, uncomfortable decisions, and we sweat those decisions. This is a case that I don't understand. I'm being asked to vote on something that should be voted on by a future council at a meeting that should not exist and for no reason at all. This hotel can be approved, its development agreement can be approved, the development agreement that is in front of us right now, and the TOT extension that is in front of us right now could all be approved if we handle it a little bit differently. And we can do it all without giving up our 1090 rights. I have to tell you that in my political career, for this city and another, we don't usually get that option where it's a win-win. The developer may claim that he can't build this hotel with the 1090 section in place or our rights under 1090. I struggle with that, and frankly, that's not our problem. If the developer has worked with and has been part of an organization that has been indicted, it's not really the city's problem to solve that. It's up to the developer to figure out how they're going to build the hotel with the challenges that they have. Furthermore, the developer has claimed that he has found the financing for this hotel long before this particular issue came up. Now, he might argue that that was based on his hope that we would lift our protections and rights under the 1090 section. Again, I don't think it's really our problem to solve that problem for him. It's his problem. Having said that, I cannot support this. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councilman McCorris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I have two issues with this, and the first one I talked about two weeks ago, which is the process. I think this process is awful. And while I agree you can't bootstrap city policy, which we haven't finalized even, onto the Brown Act, I totally get that, when the fundamental reason for this agreement, as the developer's attorney, and I thank her for finally, someone saying it to us, was to lift the 1090 and waive it, and that was never mentioned, there's a problem. It's one thing to say we can't think of everything and put everything in a staff report, but leaving out the reason this is being done violates the entire principles of what our Ethics and Transparency Task Force did, and we can fix that when we actually adopt the policy, because that is very different than, oh, we missed one thing. This is the fundamental reason for this agreement. I've been told that by staff, it's been confirmed by the developer's attorney, and no one knew. And even worse, at least one of the members of the subcommittee who negotiated this agreement had no idea until it came to council two weeks ago for the first time. So, he negotiated an agreement not knowing why, the whole goal of the agreement. What can be less transparent than that? How can you negotiate and get something? Here, we're giving everything and we're getting nothing. They're getting everything, we're getting nothing, and one of the members of the subcommittee had no idea that's what they were negotiating. How could that be an okay process to pass anything in this city? It is one of the most abhorrent things I have seen, and I find the process to be awful, and just for that reason, I will vote no. That said, because it's been said otherwise by some people, I have voted for the Virgin Hotel and this downtown project every single time it's come to us. In fact, I voted for it once with Councilmember Mills when my three colleagues didn't, wanted some changes. So, I've always supported it, and for those who say I don't, that's simply not true. In July, when we continue this matter, it was an extension, which would not have waived our 1090 rights. What came back was, without saying it, but as I read it, became clear to me, because being a lawyer, that that's what we were doing, but no one knew. I'm not willing to do that. I think it's wrong. I think it's the wrong thing to do. And the last thing I just want to say, I asked for that economic study, because I think it's really important in our financial situation to get it, and I appreciate what we got. Thirty million dollars, I think over 30 years, was the estimate. But without asking, as he walked away from the mic, the author said, however it serves a recession, we can throw this in the garbage. Okay. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go next. Might as well just go down the line here. There is expressed by some the need to reserve the right to clawback funds from the proposed Virgin Hotel when and if there are findings of guilt on the part of the parties related to the downtown development, and as a result, and as a result of such findings of guilt, the previous council's approval of the original TOT sharing agreement with the formerly approved AC Marriott is found to be tainted. I very respectfully do not agree with that position. On April 20th, 2016, at a joint public meeting of this council, the Architectural Advisor Commission, and the Planning Commission, the decision was made to modify the downtown specific plan in several ways, and one of those changes was to transfer the rights to build the AC Marriott Hotel to a new hotel on a different block, and that the proposed hotel would be a Virgin brand hotel. The next month, on May 4th, 2016, this council held a public hearing on the transfer of the TOT sharing agreement from the AC Marriott to the then newly proposed Virgin Hotel. This council agreed unanimously at that May 2016 public meeting, Mayor Potemfo was absent, to transfer the approval of the TOT sharing agreement to the Virgin Hotel. In my mind, this council at that point took ownership of the TOT sharing agreement with the Virgin Development. Hey, could we, could I finish before you guys have your ex parte here, please? Thus far, no city funds have gone into the Virgin Hotel proposal, except for the administrative work of doing staff reports to council. There is therefore currently no city money invested in, invested to clawback related to this hotel agreement. Any clawback would therefore mean canceling out on the TOT sharing agreement for the Virgin Hotel that this council has approved in the past and is now considering to extend in a similar manner to recent extensions of TOT sharing agreements with the Dream Hotel and the Orchid Tree Auberge Hotel. I have serious concerns that any potential bank or other financing agency will not be willing to invest in the significant cost required to build this luxury hotel without a solid development agreement to share TOT revenues and to reasonably support the development of this hotel. Therefore, a no vote is, in my mind, a vote to not build this hotel and therefore potentially end up with a 60-foot apartment building on this site, which would do little to support our tourism industry and provide much less tax revenue to our city, or worse, a useless foundation that is fenced off and left as an eyesore for years to come. When and if there are findings by the court of guilty actions by parties to city contracts related to the downtown development, those contracts that are tainted will be scrupulously reviewed in light of any 1090 rights the city retains related to those contracts. If and when that happens, there are certainly areas where the city has spent taxpayer dollars on the downtown development project that could potentially be looked at in light of 1090. That could theoretically be issues decided by the previous council, such as the purchase of the parking structure, purchase of the land for streets, the purchase of the public park property, and potentially even the Kempton Hotel if it is found that there were inappropriate actions taken in the approval of that hotel and the Kempton TOT sharing agreement. These contracts were agreed to by the previous council, and significant city funds are invested in some of those agreements. The Virgin Hotel, in my mind, is a separate business agreement that this council made with the current developer, Grit. It is no longer an agreement between the former council and Westman Development. I feel we need the Virgin Hotel rooms, we need the additional revenue that will bring in our share of TOT, the sales tax and the tourist dollars. We need the rooms to support our convention center, we need the 185 to 200 direct jobs the hotel will provide and the many indirect jobs it will bring. My first and only priority in this decision and any decision that comes before this council is to do what I feel, in my mind, is the best interest, is in the best interest of our city and the majority of our residents. In my opinion, we need to learn from the mistakes of the past but move forward. That includes, at this point, approving this valuable hotel asset for our city. Thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor Potemfo?
Yes. I'm also going to read a statement because I wanted to make sure that I did not miss anything in this. And first, I want to address the vitriolic statements that have been made about me and my colleagues that voted for the Virgin to move forward. I was so saddened to see the line blurred between a difference of opinion on this issue morph into accusations of corruption, friendship betrayal, and every other vicious attack that could be launched. Sad to see that there were, there was a quading of different political views with evilness rather than just different opinions or different conclusions. Fortunately, there were so many people said that they either agree with my vote or said that they didn't agree with my vote, but they knew because of the 14 years they've known me, that I always voted what I felt was right for the city. I also refuse to participate in the feeding frenzy that developed on Facebook regarding this important issue, because this important issue should be decided here, not on Facebook. This last election said something very important about our city and how we have started to heal from the pain and anger we all felt after the raid on our city hall. We showed that recovery by electing two candidates that ran a positive campaign of a positive future for our city. They won overwhelmingly. The candidates that wanted to be in election about the past were soundly defeated. They said to me, that said to me that the citizens of this city know it is time for us to move forward, and my vote on this issue was to move forward. This past weekend evening, I, with my partner, went shopping at West Elm, walked over and had a pizza at Blaze Pizza, continued on to the plaza outside the new Starbucks, tried to sit for a minute and take it all in, but it was so busy with people sitting on the stone benches, talking, that there was no place for us to sit. We decided to take the elevator to the top of the Rowan. When we arrived, we were amazed at the number of people lounging around the entire rooftop, talking and enjoying the beauty of our city. I thought about how, for the entire time that I have lived in Palm Springs, the whole center of my town was unusable and eyesore, and here it was alive again through something we had done on this council. I also thought about the merchants that have been suffering all these years with that dead hole in the middle of the city, which reinforced for me that it was time to move on. I am proud of what we have done with downtown. The stores, the restaurants, and the complex are fully rented. The new Starbucks is magnificent. The Rowan ran 70% occupancy in its first weekend, and we are working on the final planning for the new park. And now we have a chance to add the topping on the cake, being one of the few cities in the world that will have a worldwide brand, the Virgin Hotel. To fully understand the history, you have to look back to 2008, when Mr. Mills and I sat on this council. The country was in dire financial straits because of the recession. We had to cut about 14 million dollars from our budget to stay afloat. That meant cutting services, and it meant cutting people. The council previous to this decided that it needed to come up with innovative financial incentives that would turn our city around. We took a gamble, and we put a million dollars into partnerships with our businesses to help regenerate themselves and grow. We created the hotel incentive program to assist our aging hotels and refurbish and create incentives for new high-end hotel development that would help generate new tourist and convention business. We truly wanted to make this the world-class city we all profess it to be. This program has been incredibly successful as we went from 13 million dollars in TOT in the year, in that year, 2007, 2008, to 29 million dollars in TOT last year. That didn't just happen. That happened because of these financial incentives. I've said before that we never gave tax dollars away. We invested in the success of businesses and have been and will be paid back a hundredfold. We have a rebate. You must, to have a rebate, you must make an investment. This program was not a unique idea. Municipalities across the country partner with businesses to create incentives for commerce, much, many in much more significant way than what we have done here. Now, I'd like to address why I voted for the development agreement and the extension of the TOT covenant. Let's start with first, with the relationship of the Virgin to the city council. In 2014, this council, sitting here tonight, removed the operations covenant originally granted to Westman, the Marriott Hotel, and granted it to Grit Development for the Virgin. On May 4th, 2016, this council approved an operating covenant granting the Virgin the program's maximum benefit of 50 million dollars in TOT rebates. I fully believe that action by this council took away the 1090 taint. We are not giving away 50 million. We're creating a way to get 30 million in our pocket. The second reason is from the documents that we have received. John Westman has no financial interest in the development of the Virgin Hotel. This is a Grit development project. Monies for the development will come solely from Grit Development, Michael Braun, and investors, thus, in my mind, further removing any taint. Thirdly, 1090 issues exist when there is an elected official or government employee involved in a transaction. That does not exist here, as the property that the Virgin sits on is not city property. The city has not given any city monies for that piece of land. Neither John Westman or Steve Puniet have any monies invested in the Virgin, nor will either benefit. In the indictments, which are still accusations, not proven fact, and I happen to believe in the American principle that you are innocent until you're proven guilty, there is no direct check from John Westman to Steve Puniet. No proof of money's moving from John Westman to Steve Puniet. So, for me, that further removes the 1090 claim further from this project, since you can only have a 1090 claim when an elected official or employee shows there is a link. It is also apparent and logical to understand that if this project has a 1090 taint, it will never be built. What loan, if, what is put here should be stated, financing of this project depends on the guarantee that the monies loaned to build the hotel will be reimbursed by the TOT. Why would a bank or anyone, for that matter, just lend money because it looked like a good idea? The TOT rebate is part of the loan documents and is assigned to the lender, not assigned to Grit Development or Michael Braun or Steve Puniet or John Westman or anyone else for that matter. If this council insists on putting the taint back on this agreement, financing will be as impossible as anything, as there is no way for any bank investor to regain their money. So, I truly believe that in that scenario, the Virgin will not and logically cannot be built. And finally, I want to address the rushing this project through accusation, and the new council has to write the vote on this. This project has been before the city council, sitting here, since May 4th, 2016. That is not a rush. We, as this council and this subcommittee, have been working on this a year and a half. In July, we postponed a final vote for several reasons, one being that we wanted further economic study and also because we wanted to see how financially restricted we would be if Measure D didn't pass. If it wasn't for Measure D, which had nothing to do with the Virgin, we would have voted on this in September, and the new council members would not have ever decided, have ever decided on this action. This council, which was duly elected by the citizens of this city, and I was elected to do the business of the city until December 6th, when my term is up, there are so many things that this council will have to handle, including things that I voted on years ago. There are still three lots to be developed, three lots to talk about, 1090 issues. I do not, I do not want to see, I am not trading anything away. I am trading for this city. The Virgin Hotel- The Virgin Hotel will not be solely owned by Grit Development. As a matter of fact, Grit Development, in seeking the construction loan because of the controversy, will have to guarantee to the bank that the city and the investors will see their monies reimbursed far ahead of Michael Braun. We can also insist that once the Virgin is built and operating, the legal documents be drawn up to confirm one, once again, that John Westman will not receive any monetary benefit, in direct or indirect. I am not a lame duck. I am an elected member of this city council. This is a, this is a city council meeting, and I intend on voting yes on this project.
Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Ms. Foote. I mean, you, you, you covered virtually everything. I was, was, was Amy Torres and also Mr. Mayor. I think it, what, when it comes down to me, it's very, very simple. And you heard it from Ms., from Ms. Hemphill, that this project does not happen, the Virgin Hotel does not happen with any cloud of a 1090 over, over this project. No investor is going to invest any money in this project with that cloud. It's pretty simple. And if you can't understand that, then, then I don't, I don't, well, you, you, there's no reason you can't understand that. It's very simple, that the, that the amount of money that would be put into this project would be clawed back, I think is the, is the term, based on the TOT incentive in the agreement. So I, I look at this as, as a very simple vote. Do you want the Virgin Hotel or do you not want it? And if you put the 1090 on it any way, shape, or form, you're not going to get it. And this, this hotel, as all the other hotels that we've done, the, the TOT, the hotel incentive project with, have, have all proven to be very good ventures on our part and on the investment of the, of the hotelier as well. And the Rowan is not going to be any, any different than any of the other ones. This is, Ms. Foote outlined a very obvious part of that in the, in her statement of the 13 million TOT to the now 29, and that's 29 without the Rowan even in the picture. So, so I, I, I understand what my colleagues are saying, what Mr. Coors and Mr. Roberts are saying, but their comments and what they're saying puts that 1090 cloud on this project, which essentially kills it. And Mr. Roberts' statement as to it's, well, it's, it's Grit's problem, not his. Well, ultimately, yeah, I think that's true. But this project, I still view as a partnership with the city and Grit, and they are our partners and we are their partners in this. And you don't let your partner fail, and you do everything you can to make the project work for, for, for everybody. A lot of people had concerns that, that Mr. Westman, for whatever reason, was going to profit from this. I think that's been pretty set clear that that's not the case. The, I think when you look at the, the comments, or when I look at the comments, and I think Ms. Foote handled it very well, is that, I mean, I was elected over four terms, and that's four terms, and that's, that's 15 years and 12 months, not 15 years and 11 months. And, and, and the statement that I read in the Desert Sun, it was referred to by, by Ms. Middleton, saying that typically council meetings have been canceled in the period between November election and the December swearing-in of new members, avoiding the need for any extraordinary action to be taken by a lame-duck council. That is absolutely not true. I've sat here through eight election cycles, and we have never not taken an issue on that was, that had left it for the, for the new council to deal with. We dealt with them as they came along. There may be some that in the sequence that that didn't happen, that that, so it, so it went to the other council. But we have never taken a vote to have the other, have the new incoming council vote on it, except the one last time I remember was, I think it was the Virgin, on the architectural approval and the specific plan. And that was a vote and of, of the council. It was not, it's not a policy. It was not anything other than respect for the, the incoming council and outgoing council. I've sat, and Ms. Foote outlined as well, through, since 2016, through every detail that has gone on in the development of the Virgin Hotel. Our new incoming council has not, has not had that privilege of sitting there and being involved in that. I wouldn't expect them to know the detail that I know, that Ms. Foote knows, and that the current council knows in the, in that project. And if I'm, as a citizen, I want the most informed council people voting on issues. And so to, to suggest that this be, vote be put off, to me, is an insult to me when I don't, don't appreciate it, and I'm doing my job for the very last day. And, and my input will be as good on the last day as it was on the, on the, on the first day. And last, Ms. Foote, I do not look at myself as a lame duck, duck council member. I'm working at the level right now that I, that, that I did when I, when I, when I, when I, when I started this job. But the, 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 the comment also, and I'll reference the, the editorial this Sunday in the, in the Desert Sun, who's very good at giving the, not the whole story, is, they referenced $48 million of public money being given to the downtown project. Well, people still don't realize, and this has been for years and years, Ms. Foote and I have been hammering this home, that these, this is a project that the city of Palm Springs now owns over half the property of what used to be the Fashion Plaza site. We physically own it. It's in our name. The investment in the streets that you see there now that are open and yet to be open, those are all city streets owned by the citizens of the city of Palm Springs. All the infrastructure under those streets, all city infrastructure. The, and, and the parking, the 1,200 parking spaces, that is all part of our ownership of the property and owned, owned by the city of Palm Springs. So there was no giveaway here. This was an investment, and as I mentioned before, it was a partnership. And it's taken a partnership for us to see and enjoy what we're looking at now. The, the inclusion of the Virgin Hotel into the development has been, has been a phenomenal idea and concept. And I am anxious to see it, see it work, to see it happen, and I hope that, I hope that it does happen, and I am going to do everything I can to make it happen tonight. And so I will be a yes vote as, as, as well for this project. And thank you for your indulgence.
Other comments? Councilmember Roberts?
You know, I find it frankly a little bit disingenuous when outgoing council members say, well, we're working to our last day. Their last day was really the last meeting. They created another meeting to keep working. And to me, that says it specifically was cutting into the business of a new council and very clearly to push this agenda through. I wanted to state a few facts about this because, again, the waters get muddied. Our actions have consistently shown that our goal was to not unravel this development. We could have canceled all contracts with this project the day the indictments came down with John Westman and Meany and Steve Pugnay. We didn't do that. In fact, we worked really hard to finish the project. For me, there would have been nothing worse than to have a half-built project sitting downtown. To me, that would have even been worse than the old Fashion Plaza sitting there. It showed our support, our continued support for something even after it was very much tainted. Something else I need to, to state because it, again, seems to have gotten muddied. We have never, ever, by any of our actions, given up our rights under the section 1090. They still exist on every single building in that project. We may have shifted from one developer to another, but the section doesn't go away. Funny enough, the banks could have pulled out of this project anytime they wanted to, given the 1090 indictments. In fact, the developer and I have had many discussions about that and how truly fortunate he was that that didn't happen, and probably because of his good name, meaning the new developer, and because of the good work that he was doing on this project. The banks could have pulled out. They didn't. You know, if we, when this all occurred, when the indictment came down, and I, and, and if we were going to lose the development, if it was going to fall out of our hands or stop or stall, if I had been given the opportunity to save that project by giving up the 1090 rights, would I have done it? Maybe. I would have done anything to finish those buildings, to not have missing teeth there on Palm Ganyan, because I felt it was so important for our brand and our economy to get that project finished. And also, I think it's a great project. I think the finished product is something that we, we should be very proud of. It's well-designed, and it's, it's of great quality. It's the quality that I always want to see us have. But we didn't have to. We didn't have to make those choices. And when the developer's attorney stands here and tells us that this project can't be built with the 1090 section in place, I struggle with that because this comes from the same attorney and the same developer who has consistently on the entire project said, if you don't do what I want this way, the project will collapse. And frankly, that worked for a long time. And I will say that when I became part of the subcommittee for the downtown development, I started to challenge some of that. And funny enough, the project kept going, even when we didn't agree with what the developer said, meaning that the sky would fall if we didn't abide by and give him everything he wanted. And I think that's the case here. I think this hotel can move forward with the 1090 section in place. And more importantly, we lose nothing by testing it. If, if, if the developer proved to us that the hotel can't move forward with that 90 section, well, we could rethink it then. But to give up the protections just because the developer wants us to? No, that doesn't work. It never worked. This doesn't pass the basic sniff test for me on any level. My instincts are screaming. It's not the right choice. I'm really saddened that my colleagues, after all this time, are falling victim once again to a developer's demands. The tail is wagging the dog. And it, you know, I can count to three, and I, and I know that I'm, I'm, you know, it's not going to go the way I'd like to see it go. What upsets me most is the reasons. I don't mind losing, but what upsets me the most are the reasons that I'm going to lose this vote because it didn't have to happen. It didn't, they didn't, we didn't have to give up anything to have and approve this And, and I'm ready for the vote whenever anybody else is.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
No, I just want to say one thing. I, I'm not anyone's victim here. I just do not believe we are giving up anything. I don't believe that there, that there is a true 1090 issue here. I don't believe that that exists. I don't believe that, that, I do believe that this will not happen if, unless there is this taint removed. I, I've got enough experience. I have enough, I have, I live with a mortgage broker who has gone through this whole issue with me and explained to me that nobody is going to finance this with a 1090 taint on it. I am familiar with another developer in this town who is building a hotel, who also tells me that this hotel will not be built with a 1090 taint on it. And so I don't, I don't see why that's so hard for everyone to understand. And so, but I, I, I am not falling victim to anyone. I am doing this because I believe this. And you're talking about John Westman. You're not talking about the previous, the Sky Is Falling was John Westman, not Michael Braun.
Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, first off, the fact that we're, that Mr. Roberts mentioned that, you know, that we're down to the last wire on this thing. This thing was ready to be voted on several months ago, and it was the request of some council members that it potentially would taint the vote on the half-cent sales tax. And so we agreed to postpone this. And it's because of an additional information as well that didn't really change anything, but that this is down to this. I'd never intended to it. None of us ever intended just to come down to have to have, to have a special meeting. But that's the way it, it's worked out. This could have been resolved in September, in my mind. It was ready to go. The, so I don't agree with that. I also don't agree with the fact that, that as Ms. Foote said, that we were victims of a developer. I sat in every single meeting with Mr. Westman and Mr. Braun, every single meeting since 2010 or whenever the heck was we started this. Sure, Mr. Westman is, is forceful in his discussions and will say, this is the way it's got to be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That did not sway the way I thought at all. And we ended up, I'll tell you, I'll show, I mean, you can see what we ended up with. And if anyone thinks that what we have right there is a result of the city being a victim, then you have a different interpretation of being a victim than, than, than I do. And the Virgin Hotel is going to only add to what a powerful downtown that we're, we are going to have, the tax generation that we're going to generate out of that project. And so that's, that's my response to that suggestion.
Councilmember Coors?
Just want to respond to two things. One is, yes, several council members continued the matter from July, but that wasn't what came back to us. What was there in July was an extension that didn't waive 1090 claims. That is not what came back to us on November 15. It is a totally different agreement whose goal, as we've heard, It is a totally different agreement, whose goal, as we've heard, was to waive the 1090 claims. And I will agree with Mayor Pro Tem Foote on why we continued it. We continued it because, over the previous couple of months, we came to realize we were in a real economic problem, and we're looking at cuts. And we were going out and asking the voters, including ourselves, to tax ourselves, to make sure we could maintain our level of services. Yet, we didn't even have an economic study on whether this would be good or bad for the city. How would it impact other hotel rooms that were paying 100% of TOT? What's the absorption? All those questions had never been asked in any of these hotel incentive agreements, which I strongly defended, even though they were done before my time, at that July meeting. I thought that was important. And when someone does a public records act request, they'll see, "I've been asking for that for five months." I asked for it several weeks ago. I was ready to vote on it as soon as we had it. So, any insinuation otherwise, which I know have been made, are simply not true. And you can go see my emails, anyone who wants to ask from the media, or anyone else, to Dr. Ready, asking again and again for that study, because I wanted to know this was in the economic interest of the city. Secondly, with all due respect to my colleagues, I'm going to trust our two expert lawyers that we're paying a lot of money to, thank you for coming, Gary, on whether the May 16th transfer waived 1090, because they both said it didn't. And based on my conversation with our council, and prior council, and my own legal research, that's the conclusion I came to in May, that led me to vote the way I did then. I would never have voted that way, otherwise. So, everyone's entitled to their opinion, but when it comes to the law, I'm going to trust two of the expert lawyers in the state on this issue, on whether or not it waives 1090. Now, if you're willing to do that, that's the conversation we should have had two weeks ago, right? I haven't mentioned the lame duck issue. I haven't said you shouldn't vote on it. What I've said is, no one knew this. It was never mentioned. Subcommittee member didn't know it when they were negotiating. That is my main issue. So, I just want to be clear, since if anyone takes anything that was said, I don't know if it was directed at me, but that was my issue here.
Okay, I stand by, I made all my points in three and a half minutes. And I stand by those points that I made, so I'm going to make a motion to approve. Motion has been made and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify that the motion included the amendments that I read?
Yes, that will not take it back to a first reading, will it?
No, that doesn't take it to a first reading. Those are changes to the development agreement that are not really substantive. They're more a matter of form, and the ordinance itself will not change even one word.
You guarantee. Okay, all right, I tell you, you're our attorney. Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Councilmember, Kathy, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Coors?
No.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts? Mayor Pro Tem Foote? Mayor Moon?
Yes.
Approved. Three, two, noting the no votes of Councilmember Coors and Councilmember Roberts. I will read the ordinance for the record. Ordinance number 1940, and ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, approving a development agreement with DTPSB3 LLC, a California liability company, related to construction of the Virgin Hotel, located on Block B1 of the Downtown Palm Springs specific plan, at the northeast corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way, case number 5.1204SPAME, excuse me, AMEND, case number 3.3908MAJ, and case number 5.1427DA.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hart. Our next item, under unfinished business, item B.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, since it's 11 o'clock, we're supposed to see if we have public comment, since we're past our hour, so maybe we should just check with a clerk if we have public comment for the after, and review the agenda as we're supposed to.
I have one card for a non-agenda item. This is on trash receptacle out of vacation rental home. Okay. So, shall we proceed? Hopefully, these won't take that long. Besides, we started a little late. Okay, next item, item 4B, second reading and adoption of ordinance 1941, amending and restating the city's sign ordinance and repealing the city's sit and lie ordinance. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, there are some changes. There's a red line. The changes are based on council direction. We've tried to capture every word. Hopefully, the staff report is clear, and I am available for questions, as is Mr. Director Fack.
Okay, questions of staff? Okay, do we have a motion? No questions of staff? Do we have comments? Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were some modifications that I'd suggested at the first reading, minor in nature. But the interpretation of those was, in verbiage, was a little different than I had intended. And so, I'd just like to go over those, if I may. And I'm starting at...
Councilmember Mills, would you mind working from the red line that we had prepared?
I am.
Thank you so much.
The, I'm starting on page, well, page seven, that's of the staff report, page seven, on the interpretation of, about a third of the way down, building frontage means the linear length of a building along frontage. So, I'm okay with that, but then when you flip the page over to 08, in the second paragraph down, it says, "Frontage means the boundary facing portion, the boundary facing portion," that's kind of awkward, "portion of a parcel or property that abuts a public street." And then it goes on to, say, "Or private street for parcels that do not have frontage in accordance with the definition, a portion of parcel in question facing a parking lot plaza or pedestrian mall shall be deemed frontage." I never intended for that to be the case. To me, frontage is right-of-way, not a parking lot on the side, not a pedestrian way, or anything else.
Chris, just because the city attorney's in a conference with Councilmember Foote, I don't think he's paying attention to you.
No. Why don't we take a five-minute break or something?
Take a break, because they're not listening. It's hard to have this conversation if you're having it to yourself.
Okay, let's take a ten-minute break.
I understand it, don't you?
I had it written on my, uh, actually, I wrote it on my agenda.
Mr. Mayor, let's have any scheduling conversations on the record.
Okay, we need, we need to be, start public, okay? We will reconvene. Okay, do I hear, did someone make, want to make?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we continue these last two issues. I think both of them are going to require, um, you know, more conversation than a few minutes. I know I myself have quite a few things to talk about on the cannabis issue. I want to suggest that we continue this to our December sixth meeting. If the current council wants to finish up these issues, we can do it prior to swearing in, or, or we can move it over to the new council, whatever the preference is. I just think at this hour, this is what happened with cannabis last time we started working on it at midnight. So, um, I suggest we continue till then.
Could I, I just have a question. You know, I know the outgoing council members and the incoming council members probably are hoping to do something after that meeting to, you know, celebrate leaving and coming. And what about, since we're no, no closed session, could we, would it be possible to start the public meeting a little early, so we can get through that before the regular? What about, what if we, there's no closed session, so could, David, could we?
Start at five o'clock?
We certainly can begin earlier.
Are we doing a closed session?
We would schedule a closed session, but there's nothing urgent that needs to be on a closed session. So if, say, you wanted to start the meeting at four o'clock or five o'clock, we could schedule a closed session for, you know, a half hour before that, just in case there's something arises.
So we could start at four o'clock on the public session, and then take, then when we finish, we could just take a break and then reconvene at six and proceed on.
Correct, but the, the formal meeting would begin at whatever earlier time.
Right, because surely we could get through this in two hours.
Sure.
So I, one question, which I think I know the answer to, but let's just confirm it. For both the sign and cannabis, we have urgency ordinances, and so you can continue, Eddie, giving permits, and there's no delay in the week for businesses?
That's a great question. The city won't lose its edge, so to speak, with respect to the cannabis issue. You have an interim urgency ordinance in effect. It's consistent with the red line, A, the first red line in the ordinance. If you want to make changes, that's great. We'll do that at the next meeting if this is the motion and the council takes that action.
I'll second it then.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that that was...
But can we define, does, does the, do Ginny and Chris want, do you want to work on this stuff or pass it to the new council?
No, I want to work on the, I want to finish the cannabis.
Okay, so well, this council will finish those two items. It's, it, why rush it? We have an, we have an interim ordinance. I've got a bunch of stuff to go over on it, and again, we keep doing this to cannabis. We have two different red lines we need to look at and compare, plus changes to that. It's, it's just gotten so muddled up now.
Okay, are you guys willing to, we're not going to have a closed session. You guys willing for four o'clock?
If, if, if we can schedule it at four, and then we should have it done within two hours, I would, hopefully an hour.
I'm thinking an hour, we could get it all done.
Then we can take, then we can recess.
So we take a recess, and then we start up again at six.
Yes, that's what I was suggesting.
You can, you can change your sports jacket.
I think that works. I think that works.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would recommend that we do schedule a closed session prior to that. Now, we certainly can cancel that if nothing arises, but if something does arise, it'd be good to have that, even if it's just fifteen minutes.
But Doc, you don't have anything currently for the close, you just want to leave a slot in case?
Right, even if it's just fifteen minutes, just even fifteen minutes.
Can we schedule the closed session between this coming, between this meeting we're scheduling now and the six o'clock meeting?
Well, you certainly could, but if something, with these, on these issues. So, so for example, just if we schedule a fifteen minute, that should be sufficient.
Oh, before, in case something comes up on these issues, the city attorney wants to talk to us about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Dr. Ready, should we just keep these agendas rather than rewriting them again, since we're not necessarily adding anything down?
Yes, so we're just continuing the meeting.
You don't have to do a rewrite, boy, that put a smile on your face.
Well, we, we will need to put a formal agenda out, and I will confer with the attorney what specifics need to be.
All this documentation.
We'll just hang on to our books.
Yeah, okay. So all you'll need to do is an agenda.
So, I don't think we need to vote on this, we just have consensus. Apparently, we have consensus.
Uh, no, you do need to vote.
Okay, we have a motion to, on the floor, to start the next meeting, which is December sixth, at four o'clock in the afternoon, to continue, so we can, we'll continue items B and C to four o'clock in the afternoon on the sixth, and then we will recess and go in.
Well, no, proceeded by a closed session at three thirty.
Proceeded by closed session at three thirty.
Which will be canceled if not needed.
Yeah, because I have a deadline meeting that day that doesn't end until...
Okay, I make a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none in opposition, matter is passed. Ms. Hart, do you want to restate that? No?
Sure.
Agenda items B and C will be continued to next Wednesday, December the sixth, starting at four o'clock, with a closed session prior to that at three thirty. If there are no items for a closed session, that meeting will be canceled, and it was approved.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Will you be city clerk at that meeting?
Your new city clerk, Anthony Mahia, will be present.
Oh, well, thank you, Kathy, for everything you've done.
No, we'll have two clerks, we'll have dual clerks.
Okay, you will be there.
Okay, you'll be there, okay, okay, great. Okay, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I'll just add that, I've got three tabs here on signs. I will review those with staff ahead of time, so the issue, my three tabs might go away by the time we get there.
And Chris, taking your lead, I'll review all my issues with staff, because a lot of it can probably be folded in for a quick.
Good.
Yeah, it's just inconsistencies that, and a few small changes.
Okay, great. And actually, if there are suggested changes, just for anyone, to send them to the city attorney, so whether we decide to vote on them or not, he can prepare language, so he's not doing it on the fly, I think would be, help us get through it.
And could we ask that the cannabis one be done in advance, so that the subcommittee can look at it also?
That's what I just said, yeah. I'll work with Eddie on that in the next few days.
Yeah, okay, next, well, we have public comments. And we had one public comment, that gentleman, I talked to him, and he, and he talked to Ms. Cairns, and she's going to take care of his question for him, so we have no public comments. Okay, City Council, City Manager requests an upcoming agenda items, Councilmember Fores.
Yes, so a while ago, I requested that for December sixth, we put on subcommittee liaison assignments, and what I'd like to suggest is that we just limit it to some items where there are meetings between, before the thirteenth, that someone needs to cover, because our two council members are the two people on those. There are just a few of those, and I think the Subcommittee on Councilmember Rules can look at the list and bring back a recommendation.
You're my, you're my, you're my understudy.
My understudy.
You're my, you're my alternate on, on RCT, so you can...
Yes, so I can do that, but there are a couple where we don't have anyone potentially, or there are things that need to happen in that week, and they'll just be, I would just say, temporary assignments until the new council can actually spend the time to do it right. And the other thing, Dr. Ready, as we know, there is a ballot measure that's being, signatures are being looked at to see if it's going to qualify for the ballot regarding vacation rentals, that I think it would be really helpful for the public if we did an economic impact of what would happen if that passed versus if it didn't, not just the TOT, but how it impacts other, other things, and given the tight, the tight timeframe from when they're passed, that you have thirty days then to finish it, and based on when our meetings are, that could give two weeks, which wouldn't be sufficient. So, I'd like to request that that gets started. I don't know if the council needs to vote, or if you can just do that with your authority, but I think the sooner we start it, the better information we'll get for the voters.
Yeah, we can, we intend to start, we will start, because it will be under a $25,000 cost.
And if it isn't, you will come back to council, of course. Okay, that, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Dr. Ready, during the, the public forum earlier, you said that you're planning to bring the vacant and abandoned building ordinance to us sometime in January?
Well, our hope is the first meeting in January, Mayor. That, that's, because the meeting on the thirteenth is a special meeting, and it's quite full, so we're looking at the first meeting in January.
Great, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Can I ask, when, when is the, the, the meeting that's going to just, I've been getting a lot of questions from the nonprofits, when is, when is that on the agenda?
Oh, that's the thirteenth.
That is the thirteenth. And then when, also, when are we planning on doing the, the animal, changes to the animal ordinances?
I just need a meeting with you, which I'll be happy to schedule for first available date. After I have that meeting with you, we can talk about first meeting of January, I would think.
Okay, can, can I request that then, and go into the first meeting in January?
Yeah, we, we will try to get that on for your first meeting in January.
Okay, thank you.
And you can watch it at home from, on TV? Oh, okay, you sit at home with a glass of wine and watch it? Okay, okay, okay. Any other requests? Councilmember Roberts?
Mayor and council, I would like to ask for a little leeway, please, for the minutes to be prepared for tonight's meeting and the one earlier this afternoon. May I get that to you on Monday?
Sure.
Versus having it attached to your agenda tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so that'd be a little quick.
And we should all take our books, and we should all take our books with us, because they're going to be the ones we're using next week, so we don't have to, at most, you'll have new cover sheets. Lose a couple of trees, yeah.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Dr. Ready, I had mentioned something to you earlier, but I thought I'd do a formal request, and that is, you know, chapter eight point oh five of our municipal code allows the HSPB to review demolition permits, and I'd love us to agendize looking into that a little bit deeper, perhaps having the conversation around not allowing things to be demolished until we have a proposal for a replacement, rather than letting things be demolished and then just sit there as a hole in the ground. And this is something, this is a request that comes in from the HSPB, but I'd love to get that calendared in the next few months, when you can find a place for it.
Initially, is it a discussion item, or is it an ordinance?
Um, I think, well, why don't we determine that later? Okay.
Well, quick, quick question. Flynn, has, has the HSPB, have they formally voted on that as a recommendation?
They have not voted on anything yet, but they have prepared a letter, which was circulated to City Council requesting that we examine the issue.
So, um, do you, do you want to vote on that?
Well, I think what would be, what we can do, one, two ways, probably the easiest way, what my recommendation would be, is that the HSPB agendizes it, discusses it, vote on it, make a recommendation. I would bring the recommendation to the City Council, then it would be ripe for...
Okay, so that could be an easily, an easy ordinance, ordinance fix or municipal code adjustment, right? If they give us a recommendation, we could, we could accept that recommendation and move a little faster on it.
Anything else?
They're still talking about it, but...
But yes, we will have the HSPB vote on that and then forward it to the City Council.
Thank you, Flynn.
Okay, any other City Manager requests or upcoming agenda item development, okay? In that case, tonight, we will adjourn this City Council meeting in fond memory of our friend and grandy low, who was a really hardworking member of the Planning Commission for how many years?
Eight years, right?
Eight years?
Was it eight? He was two terms.
Two terms? And also a chairman emeritus of the LGBT Center and a real leader in our community. He will be deeply missed by many in this community, so in honor of our friend Randy Low, we will... Oh, and there is a service this Saturday, pardon? Sunday, eleven to...
St. Teresa.
Saturday, not, Saturday, this Saturday, the night, a week from Saturday, the ninth, at eleven o'clock at St. Teresa. Okay, with that, we will adjourn in Randy's memory until December the sixth, two thousand seventeen, at four o'clock PM. Council chamber, preceded by a closed session if required. Thank you very much, and good night.